Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Geldrollos.
Here.
Mayor Gergo.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwall. And Mayor Mas.
Here. Councilmember Vanderwall is traveling at the moment as we speak and has asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. So, motion?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the absence of JR Vanderwall, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposition, please say no. Great. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Brandon Hahn from Ivan Rest Christian Reform Church, who'll be giving the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand. We're going to follow the invocation with a pledge, please.
Lord God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, in your creative goodness, Lord, you made this world and filled it with abundance and blessing. In your grace and mercy, you've given us this world to steward and administrate and care for. Thank you for the many areas in each of our lives where we get to express that stewardship and care over your creation. Help us to do so with wisdom and discernment. I pray the same for this body this evening, Lord, that as they seek to steward the resources and gifts of this town that we live in, Granville, that you would give them wisdom and discernment too as they go about the business of our city. Help everything that's done tonight, all the words that are spoken, to be for your glory and honor. It's in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's one small correction, and that is, under the consent agenda, we have a different resolution regarding the alley vacation. I think what was in our packet was the actual resolution to vacate, and this is just to set the public hearing. Am I right, Marcy? Is that sound right?
You are right.
Okay. So with that small, minor change, is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes, a couple sets from our regular meeting, which was April 10. You've had a chance to look at that. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. And we also have the minutes from our budget work session, which was just last week. Thank you, Jane, for shepherding us through that, very understandable and good. We have the minutes from that. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes from the special or the budget work session, April 17, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Next item, bills tonight, in the amount of about $516,000. Dennis, is there anything that, before we open it up for questions, that you'd like to point out to us?
No, sir, no.
Okay. Jane, anything you'd like to point out?
None.
Okay. Great. Councilmembers, does anybody have any questions about the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve those bills in the amount of $516,119.52?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringough.
Yes.
Nordberg.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Geldrollos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Tonight, under presentation, we have Carolyn Frederick going to talk about the local officers' compensation committee recommendation. Every two years, the group meets a couple times and makes a recommendation. And Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we do nothing, it stays, and if we do something, we can't tweak what the recommendation is, we can only reject it.
Right, and you need five of you to reject it.
Okay. Thank you. After 25 years, I think I'm finally understanding it.
All right. Thank you.
Carolyn, sorry. Welcome.
Not at all. Thank you. I really was happy to know you appointed me two weeks ago, and I'm here today to talk to you as to what we did in the intervening two weeks. In all seriousness, you had in your packet the minutes from the meeting, the discussion we had, and we are recommending that you do approve our recommendation of an increase of $200 for each of the two years for both the council members as well as for the mayor. And you'll see that it doesn't impose too much of a drain on the salaries. And let me caution you, because I know when Joyce was here two years ago, she presented the information, over the years, people have felt guilty for taking the money. It's a service, they don't need it, so you've rejected it, and you allowed the discrepancy between Granville and the surrounding communities to get to a point where the recommendation was far, far above $200 last time. We encourage you not to reject it, keep going in just that little bit of an incremental amount. We did discuss percentages, we elected not to, but if you're just in the curiosity thing, the $200 is just a titch over 2.5%. So it's right there. We talked about having percentages, we talked about a variety of things, but we do recommend that you accept it. For those of you that are of the opinion that, you know, hey, I'm rich and I don't need this money, great, you can always donate your pay raise to a charity of your choice. So just take it graciously, please. Any questions at all?
Questions for Carolyn?
It's in your hands.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for your work on it, you and the group, we appreciate it. And thanks for the chart, that's always helpful, always informative. So Randy, if we want to accept, we don't have to do anything, is that...
If you do nothing at all, it becomes effective 30 days after it was filed with you.
Does anybody have any opposition or want to file a motion to reject? Anything like that? Next item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Yes, sir. Just come on up here, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about this evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dan Bowers. I live over at 3074 Harvest Avenue. When they were going to start doing construction on my street, I was told that we were going to get a letter two weeks before they started construction. The Friday before they started, or yeah, the Friday before they started construction, I got a piece of paper in my screen door, not sent through the mail or anything, but just in my screen door. And like I say, that was Friday, and they started on Monday. So I didn't feel that that was correct after, because it had been already set back a whole year. I'd been asking about, you know, when we would get some information so that we wouldn't be all of a sudden, whoa, but that's exactly what happened. And I also am kind of curious, does anybody have any idea about when they will be done with the construction?
Charlie, do you have an idea?
Yes. It should be all completed by the end of May. They took their first water sample today, second one tomorrow, and if the hook passes Wednesday, they'll start connecting the homes to the new main, then some curb work, sidewalk, driveway work, and then paving. So I would suspect towards the end of May.
Okay.
I don't know, does anybody have any comment about the way the notice happened again?
I will check with the contractor, because there was document, two week notice before.
Okay. Good. Thanks. Thank you, Charlie.
In the notice that I got, it had numbered a call, and there were like three different answering machines you could get. I called two of them, nobody called me back. I still haven't heard back from them guys.
Do you still have that notice? I'd be curious to see that.
Don't know if I still have it or not.
Because I know, yeah.
So.
Okay.
So I think the first guy I tried was Crane. I remember that name because it's construction. And there's one other item, the fire hydrants. Okay? Fire hydrant down the street from me, they put between the sidewalk and the street. The fire hydrant they decided to put in my yard is between the sidewalk and my house.
Oh, okay.
So I was told that it was because the amount of what we usually call parking, or what I used to call a parking area, which is the grass in between the two, was smaller in my area than what it was in the other, and they were afraid that the snowplows and things were going to hit it. But I got no, I got no notification that they were going to put a fire hydrant in my yard or anything like that, just all of a sudden started digging a hole, put a fire hydrant in my yard. And I did see a stake in the ground with a blue flag on it, which I finally figured out was a fire hydrant after they had started.
Yeah. This is purely a guess, maybe Charlie has the answer. I would guess it is a certain distance from the water main.
Yes, but it also has to be, there's so many feet in between ours, but typically, they don't put them in the yard, between sidewalk and curb. I will, what is your address, sir?
3074 Harvest.
Okay. I will come out tomorrow and take a look at it, talk to the engineer, find out what was the rationale was why they put it, or whether they put it. I'm sure there was a good reason, but I'll find out.
Maybe I can get some money off of my insurance because of fire hydrants right in my yard.
Right, you're nice and close, even closer now. If you do have that notice, if you still have...
I will look around and see what I can find.
Yeah, I mean, don't spend a lot of time, but I'd be curious to see it, or maybe you could give that to Charlie to see what numbers are in there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Good evening, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Mitch Leachman. My wife and I reside at 3963 Basswood Drive. I've been in Granville just a few months, but my wife got here back in September. I'm confident that many of you will actually see her at some point. She's an accountant, so she spends an awful lot of time working, maybe this Friday, maybe at the Art and Chocolate Walk, you'll see her. Please note that while I do serve on the Environmental Sustainability Committee, you all approved that appointment. I am speaking on my own tonight, I'm not speaking on behalf of the ESE. Before I get to the main reason I came, can we talk just a minute about garlic mustard?
Can I do that?
If you don't know what garlic mustard is, if you're an audience, staff, anybody in the room, if you don't know what garlic mustard is, please Google it, look it up, or just go to the sustainability page on the city's website. There is a nice little info sheet on the sustainability page about garlic mustard. This is the time of the year to find it, identify it, kill it. Kill it with no remorse. It is a non-native invasive plant. It does important things in its home country, which is not this country. It was brought over, you know, who knows when, and unfortunately, as invasive plants will do, it degrades the ecosystem. It's not just, doesn't belong here, it just isn't like not part of the ecology. Those two things are true, but it fundamentally alters the ecosystem and degrades it for wildlife and for habitat. So just thought I'd put that plug out there, went for a lunchtime walk, saw it all popping up around town, and somebody here, I think, actually, at a previous meeting, actually brought that subject up. So no, that's not the main reason I came here, but I want to talk about the master plan, which is on your agenda tonight for approval and adoption. I have a bit of experience with this sort of stuff from my time down in Missouri. I'm aware that master plans are typically a ton of thankless work. While I came in at the end of the process, I am sure, I'm confident, given just the scope and the breadth of the plan, that many thanks and appreciation are due to everyone that was involved in the multi-year effort. I did review the draft plan that was dated September of '22. I submitted several pages of comments and concerns to the planning commission in advance of their last meeting. Since that meeting, I've spoken to staff, and I'm confident that many of the issues that I raised will be addressed in the final copy. So kudos to all that. There is one area, though, that I want to draw attention for the council. Even if the concerns I raised about it are incorporated in the final document, it's just a subject that's near and dear to so many people, and to me, as a new resident, but I've just become a huge fan of Buck Creek. Anybody who's, you know, talked with me or had a chance to engage with me since I've been here, I just can't get over the fact that we moved into a community that has this amazing water resource. And the city has a vision for a greenway for Buck Creek, which is worth applause, having a vision for a greenway, because as you may know, most communities ignore, neglect, or just take for granted their water resources. And a huge thank you to this council for the recent purchase, and I think it's public, right? Public, the six acre purchase?
Yes.
Parcel on the creek, preservation of open space, so kudos to that as well. Unfortunately, there's a very important document that was missing from the draft master plan. Now, again, maybe it will be incorporated in the final, and I kind of hope it will be. It's a Buck Creek Watershed Management Plan. It was finalized last May and prepared by a coalition of groups to include the Friends of Buck Creek and the Grand Valley Metro Council. It's long and very detailed, many parts, of course, don't apply to this city. However, there are very specific recommendations that do apply to the creek within the city's borders, and potential recommendations for city policies that could help improve the creek. So I do not suggest a wholesale adoption of the plan, that would be, again, kind of silly, since it's a watershed document that covers the entire space beyond the city as well. But I do urge a very specific call-out of the watershed management plan in the master plan, perhaps something like a clear statement of intent to, say, adopt as many of the plan recommendations as practicable, right? So again, you know, reference and yet allow the fact that you have to review it and you have to assess it. My last comment, also about the creek and the greenway. I believe the greenway vision should be supported with an implementation plan. It's simply too important of an idea to not be supported with a very specific action plan. The draft master plan refers to the 2020 Parks and Recreation Plan for details on the greenway. However, the Parks Plan doesn't have a lot of detail about the greenway. Most of what is in there is about Melrose Park, which is, you know, pretty exciting itself. With 120-plus-page watershed management plan now finalized just within the last year, it would seem an ideal time to initiate a greenway implementation plan, a plan that systematically reviews and recommends adoption of appropriate key elements from the watershed plan and other aspects, right? Other elements, other tools, and things that would be needed in order to implement a greenway vision. Thanks again to the planning commission, city staff, and everyone that was involved in the master plan. As always, thanks to all of you for your time, attention, and service.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments, Mitch. Well, we have the chair of the planning commission here, Carolyn, tonight, and we also have Matt. Matt, is there anything in the master plan that makes any reference to the Buck Creek watershed management? Or how could...
That's specific. It doesn't hurt to call it out, we did the same with the ESE. Never hurts, you know? If you had to a separate plan, then that should be a separate plan, you can't add another plan to the master plan, which is a land use master plan. Parks and Rec Plan, or Addendum to the Parks and Rec Plan would be the appropriate.
Okay. So I mean, that's a possibility to...
I love it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. A question for you, though, Mitch, about the garlic mustard, because I pull it all the time. What's the best way to dispose of that?
Trash.
Trash.
Trash, trash.
Okay.
You can get away with leaving it in the landscape, composting it, and so on, if you know it and you identify it and you pull it before it starts to bud and flower. But once, and the best way to identify is when flowers quite bloom, and so at that point, you really need to put it in trash, unfortunately, because it's such a vibrant and energetic plant, it will actually continue to grow even just like laying on the ground. Pull that by the roots, laying on the ground, it'll have stored energy, and it'll still set seed, which is crazy for trees. Trash.
Trash. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Kyla, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that approved the Tree Granville program that we started this year. It seemed to be very successful. We had over 62 trees sold, and we received a tremendous amount of support from the DPW. Randy came and delivered trees for us for people that showed up with a car. Steve helped us with mulch and some coffee and donuts to make it kind of a fun event. And everyone on the tree board chipped in, and the tree project chipped in to go pick up trees, to get them staged, to get them sorted. It was a really, really positive event, and people are very excited about it, and they, we had a lot of people just come and stop to see what it was all about, and they were really sad they hadn't gotten involved this year. So I'm encouraging you to think about approving it for, again, for next year, because it was a really fun program, and people are excited, we got some really nice trees, and it just, this is a big thank you.
Well, thank you for putting it all together. That was a lot of work. And thanks for being willing to do the one-minute explanation video with no notice.
It's a positive thing, and it's great. And people love trees, and they love planting themselves.
Well, you described, Kyla did a great video, put it up on a couple Facebook pages where she in one minute describes the whole program, so, yeah. Randy, thanks for lots of hard work as well.
Well done. Did a lot of hard work, we appreciate it.
And he cut us circles of cardboard, too. I just dropped him off in his house, and they came Saturday morning all caught, so thank you.
Like magic, right? No, that's hard work, yeah.
I know, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla. Anybody else here like to address the council? Okay. If not, we'll go to the next items of business. First one, a couple related ones, and that's from the police department, talking, there were a couple memos in here on retention incentives and also recruitment incentives. So chief, do you want to take it, or deputy chief, I don't know who's presenting tonight?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Back again to discuss our staffing retention issues that we've been going through. Before you have two proposals, first one is a retention proposal, is detailed in the memo. There's two options that we're proposing. One would be a 2.5% off of the base wage, and the other would be a straight $2,500 retention bonus. This would be for any member of the PLOC rank and file, or police officers, or supervisory group members that are still employed as of December 1st, 2023, and that would be paid out in the first paycheck of January of 2024. Timing on that is, if it's a retention bonus, we wanted to make sure that the employees would still stay here for a while. The reason why those two months were chosen, the city has historically tried to keep barding groups close with some of the settled contracts coming in at 2.5, or excuse me, at 5%. The unions are set to receive a 2.5% wage increase on July 1st, 2023, so that would put it as kind of close. With the permission of Manager Durham, I was able to propose a flat rate that was slightly higher than that. And the reason why I wanted to propose that is the concept of always matching wage increases is kind of one of the reasons how we got this far out of whack with our competitors for recruiting new police officers. It's not that much of an increase, but I think it would definitely show the two unions, the city's willingness to try and address that. Manager Durham and I looked at where we would like to get the wages to. Instead of just looking at trying to meet our next neighbor, we're trying to get to the average, and realizing that some of the wages in that graphic in your memo expired this year because our contracts expire on June 30. So would be more than happy to take any questions that you might have on that.
Questions for the chief on that? So you're proposing, that's $2,500 per officer, that's your...
Officer and sergeant.
Okay. Yeah. Do they have any questions about that proposal? Total cost is about $72,000, roughly.
Yes, sir, and that would include the associated fringe costs with that, too. I'd like to thank Jane for the help with doing the math, because I'm guessing...
Yeah, the base was like 60,000 and...
I have no question, chief, but I want to just say that I'm 100% behind this. I think it sends a very positive message to the people who are still here that we care, you know, before we have an opportunity to negotiate salaries in the next contract. So thank you for researching this, and thank you for this proposal. I'm behind it 100%.
Appreciate that. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My question was, I can't find it, but I remember reading something about the corporals and that this doesn't apply, or it's a percentage, or a set amount on top of a raise already given, or something.
It would depend. If you look on the chart on the back page, the four corporals, if it goes off a base wage, the corporals will be in place for this. They will, their base wage is 6% higher than the top paid patrol officer. I don't know who is going to be the corporal yet, because we're in the testing process for that, but I was able to figure out, because you have to be at top step to be able to test for it, so I was able to figure out that difference, and that's accounted for in the first column there, at the 2.5%. It's additional $455 on that proposal. If it's a straight-up, straight, one-time payment, based on the base wage, we didn't have to figure that in, because all of them would get it, whether it's a patrol officer or a corporal.
Okay. Thank you. This might sound like a, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Josh.
Just a question, either the chief or Jane, I guess, can you explain what's made up of that estimated fringe cost that's associated with that? Is that based on things that are tied to a percent of wages, like retirement?
Yes. It would be like FICA and the defined contribution amount that the city kicks in for that. It all falls under that.
Okay. Because obviously taxes and stuff are taken out of this, too.
Yeah, FICA is roughly 7.65, and then the city contributes, I think it's 11%. I think it's 11%, so that's an additional roughly 20% on top of that.
Okay. So this just gets added to their annual, and then those calculations are done as far as the...
Yes.
Okay. That's what I figured. Thank you.
Kind of a silly question, but there's a reason that I'm asking, and Paul will probably understand, since we're both on the rapid board. We understand this is a benefit to the employees. Have you talked to the union about it, or the labor attorney, so? And everybody's being treated the same. So I've been, I don't know who would object, but it is, what, unilaterally, technically changing the contract, or is it not considered that because it's just a one-shot?
It would be very similar to the hazard pay that all the officers received 2021, I think it was. So it would be similar to that. I haven't had direct conversations with the unions about this exact proposal, but we did talk quite a bit when we were looking at possibilities, you know?
Okay. Thanks.
I have some thoughts. Thank you, chief, for this proposal, and I associate myself with councilmember Steenstra's comments, and I support it 100%. It seems to me it's mostly good for retention and not going to be so really great at getting new. It's going to stop the hemorrhaging, it seems to me, in the department, but it's not going to get us up to full staffing. And I'm... And I'm, that's an issue I'm concerned about and I wonder if that's a concern of yours.
It is. I really don't want to lose anybody that, that we have. We are sitting fairly good right now with our two, we are on a good track to have two people go through the academy this fall. If our additional FTE is approved, that'll still put us one down. And we are going to attempt to recruit hard for a certified, certifiable position that we could get trained up before the two graduate from the police academy. It will not be an immediate grabber for a new employee coming in because it doesn't, it won't impact them. However, seeing the support that the council has given and knowing that, you know, because part of the recommendation, too, is that we request that we start negotiating right away and we can say that, hey, as of July one, 2024, this is what your wage is going to go up to once we get that, that contract settled. So I think it shows a great, good faith effort. And I think even though it's not directly related to that, to open up the whole contract and look at wages, I think would have been a lot more convoluted.
I get that. It's a good point and we're close to that. But hopefully we'll, we'll keep that in mind, I assume we are, that, that full employment in the police department is going to be a goal.
Yes.
Thoughtful, I know it has been for you and for me, too, but it will be thoughtful though in our next contract negotiations, too, I would trust. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the memo and also for the graphs. Always very helpful. Randy?
Question. This does not affect negatively any of the other longevity bonuses?
No, it doesn't replace anything.
That we have, right.
It's, it's in addition. The, the timing is kind of tight, which was one of the reasons why I asked it to be paid out in January because the city longevity checks go out in December and that gives finance just a little bit of breathing room between the two, so.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to do the next one now?
Let's, let's take this one right now, just if you don't mind. Marcy, what would the resolution number be for this?
Three-three-zero-three.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number three-three-zero-three? A resolution awarding a one-time retention bonus to Granville law enforcement officers in recognition of continued service to the citizens of Granville? The amount that would be filled in would be one-time retention bonus of twenty-five-hundred dollars per officer or per law enforcement officer.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norfolk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is the Recruitment Referral Award.
Thank you very much for your support on the last one. I'd like to thank Councilmember Meringa and City Manager Durham for bringing this one forward. I refer to it as a bounty. This is one of the ways that we last our officer to the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's, and this model is based, just a mirror image of theirs. What it would be is if a city employee, not just a member of the police department, any city employee can recruit a police officer, not, not a recruit, not our cadets, but a police officer into the department. And that employee is hired and successfully completes their probationary year. The employee that referred them was also still a city employee. Upon the completion of the recruit's probationary year, they would get a one-time payment of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That amount, again, was taken just from, to match the sheriff's department. Now that, we, Josh, you said that Spectrum, or excuse me, Cornwall, sorry about that. It'll take me a while, is currently doing five-hundred. I threw in the seven-fifty just to match what the county's doing, so.
Any questions for the chief on this?
Not, not, I have a question for Josh. How well does it work with the hospital?
Well, you know, I'm not sure. It actually ranges, you know, there's different amounts for different types of employees or different, depending on how difficult they are to recruit certain professional groups. So there's a range. I think it ranges anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to a couple thousand dollars, depending on the position that you refer to. I have no idea how successful it is. It's been in place for a long time. But Dennis and I were at lunch at MML and discussing it a little bit the other day and just thought, hey, this is another extra tool maybe that can help us, you know, do a little bit more networking or incentivize our staff who maybe know somebody that'd be a good fit for the department or somebody that they know from another agency that maybe we could entice to come on over and work for us. And it's nice that we could offer it to every employee, too. So if they know, anybody who works here knows somebody, kind of, you know, it takes a village to help, you know, sort of this recruitment effort. And personal referrals are always really nice when you got somebody that can give a personal recommendation for somebody, too. So it's just a nice additional thing that we can offer, I think.
And I think it'd be pretty easy to expand to other city positions if they were experiencing some, similar difficulties in recruiting, so.
So it obviously worked for Kent County to get one of our officers. Do you know how, how well it's worked for Kent County Sheriff?
It's worked well enough that I've had a discussion with a few deputies about who they can and can't talk to, but. At least while they're at my time. It, it has been good. I know it has a, it gained a lot of interest with our officers when they found out about it. So even if it doesn't have a direct benefit, it is definitely going to have a huge morale boost, knowing that it is at least a possibility, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, chief, for really taking, taking the lead in the whole recruitment retention thing. I mean, in, in fast order, too. Like the corporal program and these two things, so, thank you. So we have a resolution before us. This will be thirty-three-oh-four, a resolution establishing that Recruitment Referral Award. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
Any discussion, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norfolk?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is a resolution to adopt the master plan. Worked on this a lot.
Take the wire. Yeah. So, thank you. First, I'd need to thank the many hours spent by the planning commission and also Chris Corey, the McKenna, as well as his staff. As you know, Chris has done a lot of projects for us over the last five years or so. He apologizes for not being here tonight, but he's on medical leave due to recent surgery. So he's carried us all the way through this using his know-how and his profession to draft this for us. As you know, I think I've been up here, I think, four or five times now with a request to approve a master plan. I've been here long enough to do that. The Planning Enabling Act requires, in the state of Michigan, the cities, municipalities, townships review their master plans every five years. This started because the city of Grand Rapids had completed the master plan in nineteen-sixty-four and didn't touch it until the early two thousands. And then they came out and they rolled out this great grand thing that, yes, we're going to be talking about the master plan. That kind of stirred the people lancing that something needs to be done about this. So we started this off like we did with the Parks and Rec Plan. We put a booth at the Vintage Fest. That would have been the two-thousand-twenty-one Vintage Fest when we started this off. We created a bunch of postcards that took folks to an online survey. So we made face-to-face contact with a whole lot of people that weekend to help because we are right across from the, one of the food trucks. So as people lined up, we got it. So we talked to a lot of folks. They gave us ideas. We handed out these cards to a lot of folks. It took them to this online survey. We also kept that survey up and had a leak from our website for another month. So it's well over two-hundred people responded to that survey. And then the planning commission dug in on those comments and went from there. The purpose of a master plan, as we've talked previously, is to guide us for future rezoning requests as well as redevelopments throughout the city. As I mentioned in my memo, the master plan is really divided into four parts. Kind of took me back to Latin class in high school. All of the galls divide into three parts. Don't know if I could recite that in Latin, but the master plan is divided into four parts. The first is the planning context. Gives you a regional snapshot of West Michigan. Discusses broader development, plannings and trends. Talks about like the new urbanism, some of the housing types we, we discussed in our new zoning ordinance that took effect in December of twenty-one. Also describes Granville today, what's going on in our community today. Housing profiles, existing land use character of the community, some of our natural resources. Talked about Buck Creek earlier. As well as gets into the details about the input process we, we went into for this. Then it also looks at what's Granville tomorrow. As part of this, you'll notice, is what is a future concept for the potential, if, if it is potential, redevelopment of the mall. We all know it's our largest taxpayer in Granville. We all want it to thrive, but we understand market powers and what that is doing to regional malls. So we thought we'd get ahead of this. And first, option A, hey, we love the mall. We want it to be successful and thrive. Option B, what if it goes out of business? I think it's a hundred-and-eighty acres. That's a lot of property inside Granville, which is only seven-and-a-half acres. And then the last part is implementing viable change, changes. So there's a lot here. It's a hundred-and-two-page document. Hope I did my best to, to go over it quickly for you without wasting a lot of time. I would be happy to. Oh, one other thing. I did notice, going through this draft today, there's a couple things that need to be taken care of. We can add the reference to Buck Creek watershed. The acknowledgement page at the beginning needs to include Dennis as well as Matt Larson on the planning commission. And also on page seventeen, there's a reference to Standale. That should be Granville. And some of the maps are marked direct. That will be all cleaned up before that plan is published. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Matt?
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I, I want to thank everyone, your work, Chris Corey, the planning commission, city staff, everyone who took part in that. I read through it with a eye, as you highlighted on the mall and, you know, what the vision was. And as you outlined, I really appreciated the thought that went into saying, okay, we want to see this thrive. How can the city partner with the mall and hold activities there, maybe through schools, community events, those kinds of things? So I really applaud that. And then I liked the vision for what could be if market forces, you know, eventually way, way, way down the road, lead to change. One maybe feedback I would provide is I remember when I was first on the council and we went through this, we had a big meeting in here with the planning commission and the city council and we all met together. And I kind of missed that this time. I felt like, especially being new to the council, I found that very valuable to have that, to help digest because it is a hundred-and-two pages or whatever, you know. So, and then bringing in like the Environmental Sustainability Committee into a meeting like that, so different voices can be heard. I honor the planning commission and all of their work. I think they did wonderful job. And I, on most matters, believe that, you know, those who are closest to the issue and working on it, we have an obligation unless we see something really in need of correction to honor that work by approving it. But just for future reference, I did personally find that very valuable and I think it would be valuable to maybe return to that in the future.
Absolutely. We can certainly move forward next time. Well, we'll start maybe three, three-and-a-half years out from today.
Great.
And make sure we include that, that part.
Thank you.
I'd like to do that. Good comment.
Other comments, questions? I've got a quick question. So we're going to make some reference to the Buck Creek watershed management plan. And then what, what would be the next step in, in kind of refining that or making, like Mitch said, you know, an action plan or?
Sure.
Yeah, how, how do we do that?
You know, it's something we, that's, I think, an action plan's going to be its own plan. It's going to take time to develop that. You know, we could work, start working with the staff at Elgro and the Metro Council. So I, I dedicate time and money, really.
So that's something that planning commission takes a look at first?
I, I, planning in Park and Rec, I think, would be important in that conversation. As a plan tonight, if you're comfortable with it, you're going to prove it with conditions that these items that I, I discussed change. Or because this has taken a year and a half, it's prudent to say, all right, let's get these changes done and bring us back a clean plan at our next meeting. It's really in your hands.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on that? I personally don't have a problem approving it with the three minor changes and the reference to the Buck Creek master plan, but that's one of six tonight. Thoughts?
I think that's fine, too, if we can make those changes. There isn't anything pressing that we need to get the plan approved by for statutory requirements or anything, right?
No, not at all.
So I guess it may be fine to clean it up and then look at it one more time, too. I can go either way. I think they've done a good job on it. A lot of work has gone into it already. If there's just a few minor changes, that's not a big deal either.
Selfishly, I'd like to get off my desk, but again, two weeks is not going to go.
Other thoughts? Okay. Well, this would be Resolution Number thirty-three-oh-five. Should we be able to vote it up or down, right, Randy? Or what did you say just?
Well, if someone wants to move it, yeah, you can vote it up or down. Or if someone has a contrary motion right now, to table it for, I mean, I'd have to get that motion first.
So one of those motions?
I guess I apologize that it would remain on your desk, but I, I just like the idea of having a couple more weeks to look at it and then, you know, have that cleaned up version. So I would make a motion that we table it until the next meeting.
A second motion.
Any discussion? Marcy, would you, this is a motion to table to the next meeting. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norfolk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. It will remain on your desk for another couple of weeks. Next item is the M dot local bridge program grant application. Dennis, do you want to walk us through that?
I would defer to Charlie. Charlie brought this up at our budget meeting. You'll remember, we talked about it briefly. There was a review of the bridges in the city of Granville and the reports. One of them particular rose to the top. Charlie, could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, the bridge, the bridge over Buck Creek on Chicago Drive. According to this, if you've seen some of the pictures, it's entirely a shape. It's a dead leg. They're going to reduce the load limits on the bridge because the bridge cannot sustain the current load ratings on it right now. Came up short quickly that, oh, there's a grant you can apply for. We got some numbers together and the numbers came out to almost five million dollars to do the bridge. It asked for a five percent match up to ten percent because they say if you open up, you're going to have a better chance of getting a grant. The grant, this construction probably wouldn't go until twenty-five or twenty-six. And it, it needs a resolution from the council. probably wouldn't go until '25 or '26. And it, it needs a resolution from the council to go along with the grant. The grant's not what you've been applying for, but we have time to get this grant or the resolution. That's what this resolution is for, is support of applying for a grant, which I hope we got.
Sounds like a lot of money for a bridge, doesn't it?
It's a total reconstruction, just tearing everything up, new steel, new concrete all around. And I said that night, too, there's, there's the canals, Canal, Ivan Rest and Wilson that are going to need not total replacement, but work over the next eight to 10 years. So once this one gets completed, in two years, you'll be looking at doing another bridge with some cost incorporated with it.
So, so Charlie, I was reading it and trying to understand it all, but I, I read that heavy loads would have to go along the highway and couldn't come through Chicago Drive. And I thought, in my head, that would be down the road. But you're, but I heard you just say, starting now, they're limiting loads?
Once he gets the new load limits, yes, they will be posted. They'll be posted up on the expressway, all over the different industries that go to it. Because if we don't, your lib will have something.
Break.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the last thing you want.
Okay.
Marcy, I've got a question for you. Could this be 3305? Since we did 3304?
3306.
33, oh, okay. 3306.
Got a lot tonight.
Other questions for, yeah, Randy?
Just a quick question, just kind of curious. Are fire trucks be over the load limit or do they need an exemption or anything like that?
That's a very good question. I think it's available to, I don't know what's fully, really, I have to look that up. I could get this information back to you on that. That's a very good question.
Thank you. Without water, with water, huh? Thank you.
So is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3306? That's a resolution in support of the supplemental of grant application with that bridge?
So move.
Support. Any other questions, discussion, comments? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galdrelos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Tonight, under the consent agenda, approval would be in the best interest of the city because there's some miscellaneous, there's some purchase orders in there. So we have the March report, the investment fire EMS and clean water plant report for March, as well as the minutes from April for the Fourth of July Celebration Committee, the planning commission and the local officers compensation commission. Also setting a resolution or adopting a resolution, setting the public hearing on that alley vacation that we've talked about before, and a couple miscellaneous purchase orders and requests regarding painting and sealing the basketball courts at Calvin Press and Heritage Park, and also repaving a salt shed parking lot by DPW. So is there a motion to approve that consent agenda in the best interest of the city? And then we'll open up for questions or comments.
So move.
Support. Motion support. Any comments, questions, anything anybody like to point out on any of those items? Okay. If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Galdrelos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. City manager's report. First thing is a bit of a word for our street overlay program. Charlie?
Yes, they received two bids, one from Reeve Riley, one from Michigan Paving. Michigan Paving came in under, it's a cheaper one, but they did not include the addendum number two, which they received. And they overlooked it. Therefore, their bid disqualified it because it didn't have the proper documents in it. So therefore, I'm here to discuss hearing the bid. It's long been ago to Reeve Riley construction, to pay where locals and towns and streets in the amount of $648,766.
Okay. Nice thing about it is it came under budget.
Yes, it is under budget. According to the highest person.
Yeah. Any questions, comments for Charlie?
Randy, yes.
I'm sorry, Randy.
What is, was addendum two, and why was it so important that you?
Addendum two was a street we added to the, after the bid went out, there was actually two addends. First addendum was the grain structures on the prairie to the corporate, where what we're doing now is we pave over the structure, the GPS would pave over it and record the concrete amount. It's understandable. We were doing, that was the first addendum. The second addendum is we missed out putting in Derrick Street on it, and that was one we were going to do. So I sent it out both in hard mail and an email to both of the companies. And when I talked to Michigan Paving, he said he didn't receive it. I said, well, I have a copy of the email. And he called me or emailed me back an hour later and said, we found it, we overlooked it. So that's the addendum number two.
So the 77 some dollars difference, you're saying it's not apples, oranges, that Michigan Paving left some things out? Had they caught that, it would have, their bid would have been more or not? Because that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it looked like the addendum number two that Reeve Riley.
Yeah, it was 62.
Sixty-two, yeah.
And what if Bobby Stilman left? Yes.
But not the 77?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
I guess there's, there's this missing, right?
Yeah, okay. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, is there a motion to approve according to the contract to pave to Reeve Riley in the amount of $648,766 and 60 cents in the best interest of the city?
So move.
Support. And support. Other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Galdrelos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, anything else?
Not this evening.
Okay. All right. Councilmember comments. Paul, let's start with you tonight.
Mr. Mayor, we have to adjourn to a closed session?
Ah, yes.
You said you had to take, you can take some comments first.
I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to give a shout out to Scott and Todd. They're not here tonight, but the tour of the clean water plant last week was great. I did it a year ago, and I saw further improvements. The place is beautiful. I've toured neighboring facilities and they just don't measure up to what I saw last week. So, you know, one of the cool things about Granville is we have great fire department, we have great police department, we've got great DPW, and we got a great water plant. It's a small community with full services. And, you know, I just appreciate all of you, but that was, that was a cool half hour last week.
Very good.
That's it.
Okay. Nothing for me. Josh?
Yeah, so I had a chance to go to the MML cap con last week, and it was a good conference for a couple of days in Lansing. And kind of talked about some of the legislative priorities for the league, for communities, and some of the things that are going on with the legislature and some of the new funding that's coming from the federal government and things like that. The three key things that they asked local municipal officials to discuss with state legislators were increasing and protecting revenue sharing. And pretty excited, the governor's budget actually includes a 10% increase proposed for revenue sharing, 5% statutory, 5% constitutional, I believe. So that's pretty exciting because if that goes through, that would be the largest increase that we've had in quite a while. So I was pretty excited about that. They also talked about restoring local resources and kind of adjusting the disabled veterans tax exemption for the state to be able to pay for that and change that into an income tax credit versus a property tax exemption to, to readdress that. And then they talked a lot about housing. In particular, there's a bill that would modify Brownfield redevelopment financing act to allow housing as an eligible use for, for Brownfield sites. So those are just a couple of things. We heard the legislative update from the, the league lobbyists that work for us in Lansing, and there's a lot of things going on. The governor was there and spoke for a few minutes. I went to a couple of sessions. One of them was about hiring practices. So that got me thinking a little bit about some of the stuff we talked about tonight with recruitment and retention. And I asked the person who was presenting a question about law enforcement specifically, and they really didn't have a great word of advice there, but I'm glad to see that we've got a couple of things going on that will help us hopefully recruit and retain our law enforcement folks. And then I also went to another session that was put on by a, an undersecretary of state, talking about some of the election reforms that will be going into effect and some of the implementation of some of the changes from proposal two from last year. So lots of interesting things there. And I did bring a copy for you, Marcy, just in case you're interested. Maybe you've seen this already, but he shared a handout here with a fiscal '23, '24 estimated election costs, kind of what they're asking for at the state level for election costs. Really, the secretary of state's office is looking to legislature to fund the changes that will be put into effect with proposal two. And they're really, they're working very hard to not have that fall on local communities as, you know, local costs to be able to implement, you know, the early voting and the drop boxes. And so they're working hard to try to advocate for, for state funds to pay for that. So that was a very interesting session, lots of discussion and questions there because a lot of things are kind of being worked out as far as details. But appreciate the opportunity to go. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention was, there was a letter in our packet here, congratulations to Brittany Cooley, our deputy clerk, for achieving her Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks certification. So I know, Marcy, you've gotten that. It's great to see Brittany moving along that path, too, and getting that recognition. So congrats to Brittany.
Randy?
I guess I just want to say thanks to everybody who was involved with the tree sale. There was a lot of support and a lot of work done behind the scenes. And it was a great day for the project board and the tree board and the city. And, you know, I want to give a shout out to Kylie. She put a lot of work in developing the online tree store ahead of time. And 62 trees, I thought that was really good going into it. I thought if we did 20 trees, we'd be happy. So 62 trees are planted around Granville or will be. And it's a good day. And thank you.
Yeah, I call Randy's comments. Tree event was great. Also, on Saturday was a recycle event. And otherwise, I'd be talking to Jar about that or Mitch, the environmental sustainability committee sponsored cardboard and surf foam recycling. It's a great event. I know I personally appreciate it a lot, a lot. Also, we want to just let everybody know, Granville Community Choir will be doing a concert Sunday at 6:00 PM at First Reformed Church right across the street in Granville. It's the spring concert, some nice music. If you're looking for something to do Sunday night, 6 o'clock, it should be good. That's all I've got. So Dennis, did you want to adjourn or recess to closed session?
Please.
Are we coming back?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to be recessing.
If you're coming.
Okay. Is there a motion to recess to a closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the Granville City Employees Association?
So move.
Austin?
Support.
And support. Discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Galdrelos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norhut.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Okay, so we will recess to a closed session. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.